Good evening, welcome to Okene County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August the 2nd, 2022. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After moment of silence, we're going to ask Commissioner Harden to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Thank you.
Yeah, first item of business tonight will be to adopt the agenda. Motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next time is statements and remarks from citizens. This is for anything that is not on the agenda for tonight. Anyone virtually? Thank you. Any statements or remarks from commissioners? I do want a reminder that the farmland preservation program is taking applications through September 9th of this year. You can find those at the NRCS office at the government annex. Also, we're doing an update to our comprehensive plan, the five-year update that we plan to complete in 2023. There's an online survey that will be available through September 1st, and we'd ask that anybody interested in having input on comprehensive plan, complete, complete this survey for us. So next time is approval of the minutes. This is for our regular meeting on July 12th and the agenda setting meeting on July 26th.
I'm making motion to approve, that we approve those two as submitted, so.
Motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. The next item is the second reading of the amendment to the noise ordinance. Guy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is the, the second reading of the noise ordinance, section 38, 1, 2 of the Okene County Code of Ordinances. Again, this is the proposed change that would prohibit tractor trailers and other large vehicles from producing excessive noise by using brake brakes or failing to use a proper muffler. You have the text in front of you. I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Any questions? Do we have any public comment on the noise ordinance adoption? Anyone virtually? Go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the noise ordinance.
Yeah, a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next, we're going to move into our hearings and actions on zoning matters. Just want to run through our procedures for tonight. The reason petition shall be presented by the staff with no time limit. The applicant who signed up to speak for the petition shall be allowed a total of 20 minutes, less the applicant's reserve, reserved time for rebuttal. Those wishing to speak against the reason will have a total of 20 minutes as well. The public comment session, session will then be closed, and the board commissioner will have an opportunity to ask questions as they find appropriate, and then the board will take action as set out and set out in Unified Development Code. Before we move into any hearings, we're going to ask Guy to come up. We have a request reverencing reason P-22-0061 and P, variance number P-22-0127.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, staff has received a request to table or defer the public hearing of reason P-22-0061 in order to provide additional time for the applicant to follow up on and try to accommodate some of the concerns voiced by the adjacent residential community. Typically, if the Board of Commissioners deems appropriate, the case would be for deferred to the next regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners voting meeting, which would be September 13th.
Any questions for Guy on that? Okay, thank you. We will get that addressed. So we have a request for postponement to September 13th, 2022. On these two items, is there any motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve postponement of reason P-22-0061 and variance P-22-0127 to our September 13th meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could, kind of exit on out from the doorway so we can close the doors and continue the meeting. Not closing those doors. Our next item is reason P-22-0077. This is Taylor and Amanda Jenkins. This is AG to AR, plus or minus four acres located at 1351 Collin Ferry Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P-22-0077. Taylor and Amanda Jenkins, located just south of Watkinsville on Collin Ferry Road. And this is the aerial photography of the subject parcel. That's currently zoned AG in the country states character area. And again, the request is a reason of four acre portion of the property from AG to AR in order to subdivide the property into three parcels, building a single-family residence and bringing the property into conformance with UDC section 106, 06A. This is the concept plan that you have in your package showing the three lots. Again, zoomed in slightly, two acre, two acre, and the remaining 12, a little over 12 acres. These are the architectural images submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with the one standard condition. Planning Commission recommends approval with the same condition. Thank you.
And now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner?
Good evening, I'm Amanda Jenkins, 1341 Collin Ferry Road. Basically, we have lived here for 20 years, my husband and I, and three children would love to build our dream home, finally. So we had the 16 acres, and we would like to be able to sell the back parcel of property, track three, to my niece and her family. They have two small children. And then we're going to move his parents, his aging parents, up to the house we're currently in that we renovated, and then be able to build our home. So.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this reason request? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? And with that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and open up to any questions from commissioners. We'll entertain a motion when ready.
I make a motion to approve reason number P-22-0077, Amanda Jenkins, AG to AR, plus or minus four acres located at 1351 Collin Ferry Road with the one condition.
Okay, with motion and second to approve reason request P-22-0077 with one condition? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is reason P-22-0085 DG DF Holdings LLC. This is AR to AG. Or it's AR and AG to AR, 4.47 acres located at 1101 Cliff Dawson Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P-22-0085 DG DF Holdings. This is the aerial of the subject property. It's currently split zoning AR and AG in the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, the request is to go from AG and AR to AR in order to subdivide into two single-family lots. This is the concept plan in your application showing the, the two parcels. Architectural images that were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with the two standard conditions. Planning Commission also recommends approval, subject to the same conditions. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Justin Greer with Pittman Greer Engineering, 1050 Barber Creek Road. Pretty simple, just trying to clean up the zoning, going from AG to, and AR to all AR. Want to split it into two lots. It does back up to Wendy Creek subdivision. Those are one acre lots. On one side, we have commercial office, and on the other side is a 1.6 one acre lot. It is in the suburban neighborhood character area. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for this reason? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? And with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that and open it up to any questions from commissioners. We'll entertain a motion when ready.
I'll make a motion to approve reason number P-22-0085 DG DF Holding, AR and AG to AR, 4.47 acres located at 1101 Cliff Dawson Road, residential with any conditions.
Okay, a motion and second to approve reason P-22-0085 with two conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is reason request P-22-0089. This is New Magnolia of Okene LLC, R3 MPD and AG to OIP. This is 24.07 acres located at 1541 and 1641 Virgil Langford Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P-22-0089, New Magnolia of Okene LLC owner. This is the aerial photography of the subject parcels that are listed in the application. It's currently zoned R3 and AG in the regional center character area. And again, the request is to go from R3 MPD and AG to OIP in order to expand and create an assisted living community. This is the concept plan that you have in your packets showing the existing facility with the cottages surrounding it. This is the concept plan rendering that was submitted as well. There currently is a reason 3117 that allows for the assisted living facility, which is currently existing, the 49 units. A long-term care facility, unknown number of units, 25,000 square feet in this location, and then 48 of the independent living units, which were a mixture of duplexes and quadplexes. And then, of course, on this side is the current application with the assisted living facility with the existing 49 units and 78 independent cottage living units. These are the architectural images that were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our standard three conditions. Number four, in lieu of the required landscape strips, a 10-foot wide structural buffer meeting the standards of UDC section 804, 808, 04B, shall be installed along Mars Hill Road and Virgil Langford Road. Said buffers shall be installed outside of all existing utility easements. The planning commission recommends approval subject to the conditions recommended by staff.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Justin Greer, Pittman and Greer Engineering, 1050 Barber Creek Road. We are representing the owners this evening in the reason request. The property had an assisted living facility built on site in 1997, and then 2003, they came in and did an R3 MPD zoning to add those quadplexes. What we'd like to do this evening is, is take that plan and modify, and instead of doing the quadplexes, do independent cottages. We feel that better fits the area with the more in line with residential that's around there. It'll be low traffic, paying taxes without putting children in schools. It meets the character area. We have recommendation from staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the owners are here also. Thank you, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for this reason? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion. Any questions from commissioners on this one?
Sure. So the Unified Development Code sets the standards for a structural buffer. It's an enhanced buffer that we use typically for a zoning buffer. In this case, a 10-foot landscape strip really just requires that there be shade trees that are located in that 10-foot strip. Whereas if we require the structural buffer, there'll be additional landscaping features that would be required. So bushes, shrubs, a fence, a burn, those types of things that we would apply during the construction process.
So that would be, in essence, blocking into view from the roadways.
That, that, that's correct, yes. It would, it would provide an additional screening buffer along both of those road frontages for both the residents and the pedestrians.
Now, the other question that Chair if I could add, I'll have before is, is on the entrances, going to use the current entrance. With all that's going on in that vicinity for the next 15 years, what, what's your vision that's going to happen to that intersection with Virgil Langford because, I mean, it's, right now, it's pretty quiet, you know, it's not a lot of traffic coming out of there, but think your daily trips are like 600. And with the flyover, I would anticipate there's going to be more traffic using Virgil Langford once the flyover is completed. And God forbid was that detour going to arrive when they reroute 316 through there, literally reroute 316 through. So help, help me understand what your vision to that, what we could do, or what going to have to happen to that intersection?
Well, in this case, I believe construction is about its 2024 timeframe for, for the interchanges in 316. This may be well ahead of that. You know, at, at the time of, of rezoning, we have not required a traffic impact analysis because it didn't trip our threshold. Certainly, we've had our traffic consultants look at it, trans systems, our public works directors looked at it. There were no recommendations for any other improvements at this time.
What was the traffic count previously?
I believe it was around 400, 410 in the previous.
And that was, that would have been, without knowing what was in, going to go into that 25,000 square feet?
Possibly. I, I, I'm, I'm not sure what discussion was had back then at that time, but there was nothing in the documentation that showed a number of units in there.
But there would have been more than likely employees who would have been coming in.
More than likely, and there could have been a, a ratio assigned to a 25,000 square foot assisted living facility.
But that's a dog.
Yes.
I got a quick question, Guy, because I don't know the answer to this, and you probably don't know, I might have helped you out. Is that stormwater pond in the front going to hurt our lift station at all? Is it going to affect our lift station?
So we'll, we'll look at that through our construction plan approval process. Obviously, all of our reasons are sent to water resources for review, and there were no comments.
I've got a question. And this came from a citizen. They were asking about the density of the previous plan compared to this one. Can we talk about that a little bit?
So the previous plan was an R3 MPD, right? So it was a master plan development that had units, lots, that type of thing that could be sold. So there was a density attributed to it. This request is for OIP zoning for an assisted living community that is essentially a, a one-owner facility. The entire property will be one-owner, and it's a commercial development, which then qualifies it for the, the sewer allocation.
Somebody has something just curious now. Were the causes of MPD, were those house parcels, were they going to be privately owned?
They were, they could have been rented and privately held. That's correct. There were no restrictions on that.
So now we've got it all under one roof?
Yes. So, so if you're familiar with Creekside, on the, on the north side of 316 there, each of those quads are split and are, and can be sold. So similar quad units as to these are, are split up in a condo-type situation.
Any other questions from commissioners? Thank you, Guy. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve P-22-0089 as stated with the conditions.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve reason P-22-0089 with four conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Okay, our next item is reason request P-22-0091. This is Alexander and Sayte Ginn. This is AG to AR. It's 8.1 acres located at 1971 Flat Rock Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P-22-0091, Alexander and Sayte Ginn. This is the aerial photograph of the subject parcel. It's currently zoned AG in the country states character area. And again, the request is reasoned from AG to AR in order to subdivide into three two-plus acre lots. This is the concept plan that you have in your package showing the two acre, two and a half acre, and a 3.6 acre tract. These are the architectural images that were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval, subject to our standard, one standard condition, then two, the proposed new driveway for lot C shall be constructed to provide as much separation as possible from the existing gravel drive on lot A. The driveway location shall be subject to approval by the public works director. Number three, the proposed driveway for lot B shall be constructed to provide as much separation as possible from the existing paved driveway for parcel C045034G. The driveway location shall be subject to approval by the public works director. Planning Commission recommends approval with the same conditions.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner?
Good evening. I'm Alex Ginn. Me and my wife live in 1971 Flat Rock Road. We purchased this property about three years ago, and at the time, we had no kids. Now we'll have two by the end of this year. Basically, the house that is there now is not quite large enough for our needs, so we pursued about every other option as far as adding on to the house, buying a new house. And basically, our plan to build a house towards the back of our property is what we've decided is best for our family. We did decide to split this property into three lots. The reason being, if our family grows maybe a little bit more than expected, and we need another shot at a house, and then also, we both have aging parents, and we might use that house for our parents in the future. So with that, any questions? Be happy to answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this reason? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. Any questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve reason P-22-0091, Alexander and Sayte Ginn, AG to AR, plus or minus 8.1 acres located at 1971 Flat Rock Road, with three conditions.
We have a motion and second to approve reason P-22-0091 with three conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is reason request P-22-0131. This is AG to AR3, 9.9 acres located at 1591 Snow's Mill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, P-22-0131, Jeremy Ziyadi as owner. This is the aerial photography of the subject parcel. As owner, this is, uh, the aerial photography of the subject parcel. Again, it's currently zoned A G. In the country states character area. And they are requesting, uh, rezon from A G to A R three, uh, in orders about, subdivide the property into three lots. This is the concept plan that you have in your, your package showing the, the three lots. Uh, these are the architectural renderings submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with the one condition, planning commission also recommended, uh, conditional approval, uh, with the same condition.
Thank you. Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Hey, my name is Jeremy Ziyadi, I live at five eight seven New Hope Road in Lordsville. Basically, my wife and I bought this property back in March, I believe. We just wanted to subdivide it so we could build another house while keeping the existing house on the property. Uh, I guess there's a law saying that if you have, uh, you got to have at least five acres to have a house on the property of A G. And since there's only, or since there's already one there, and it's only nine point nine acres, we'd like to subdivide A R three so we can put them in a house. Thanks.
Thanks. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this rezone? Anyone virtually? Anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments, any questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve P twenty-two dash zero one three one. Um, as stated with the conditions.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve rezone request P twenty-two dash zero one three one with one condition, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is consider the twenty twenty-two tax millage levy for Oconee County Government Maintenance and Operations. So the Oconee County Board of Commissioners adopted the F Y twenty-three budget on June seventh of this year. Over the last several years, the B C, B L C has remained, uh, steadfast in its strategic plan. To the county comprehensive plan and having the right number of people doing the right things. Based on this commitment, we're able to improve employee pay this year, continue progress on our strategic plan. And use only the new growth of the tax digest to finance general fund operations. Uh, the Oconee County Tax Commissioner has completed Department Revenue Form P T thirty-two point one for the twenty twenty-two tax collection year. This form calculates the military rate needed to offset inflationary growth of the existing real property in the digest. And based on these calculations, we are here tonight to consider the following millage rates for the unincorporated area, five point nine five four. Incorporated is six point zero eight four. Um, property tax collections as a whole are estimated increased by five hundred and sixty thousand dollars this year, and that's based on new growth less new exemptions filed. Any questions from commissioners on this? We'll up it up to any. Six point eight oh four, is that what I say something different? Okay, so incorporated is six point eight zero four. Five point nine five four. I will open up to any public comment this time, Mr. Webb.
So my name is John Webb, I live at thirteen twenty Bent Creek Road. Uh, I wanted to come before the commission tonight, and I wish we had more people here. But maybe we have someone from our, uh, legal organ here that can publicly, uh, uh, at least record, uh, the remarks I'm going to make. You know, I've appeared several times before, previously before this board. Um, I've asked, I've pleaded, I begged, I've admonished the board to reduce the millage rate. Uh, to help roll back for the, uh, the increased evaluation of the properties. And, uh, some reductions were made, so, uh, I did not speak to a unfeeling board. But because of constraints and because of, uh, uh, tax, uh, revenue and other issues, uh, then the board was not able to, uh, make the, uh, full, uh, ta, rollback of, uh, millage rates to, uh, equal the increased property taxes. So this evening, I come, uh, to praise the Board of Commissioners for their vision and insight into the need to reduce the millage rate. Without, uh, going into a whole lot of, uh, of, uh, uh, controversy or information about the meeting last night with, uh, with the Board of Education. Uh, contrary to that, then, uh, I found this Board of Commissioners to be very open and very, uh, recognizing and causing it of the needs of taxpayers of this county. So, uh, you know, this year is doubly, uh, appreciated in the light of inflation. Uh, inflation is just raging at, uh, about nine percent, and I think it's probably double that. Because when I go to the grocery store, uh, every week, uh, I see prices increase tremendously. And I don't have to tell you about the, uh, cost of, uh, fuel. Uh, the, uh, the need for a reduction this year is, uh, greatly needed. And it affects this inflation, it affects, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the pocketbooks of everyone. So, uh, gentlemen, uh, we needed this reduction. And I thank you for your work, I thank you for the staff in making this happen. You know, so many times we come before you, uh, people, citizens come before you, and they are just moaning and, uh, groaning and complaining. And sometimes I don't see how you go home and sleep at night because of all the abuse that you take. But I know you, you do it because that you really care about Oconee County. I know all of the commissioners, I know each one of you personally. So I know and appreciate what you do. So I want to just, uh, come to you tonight to publicly acknowledge, uh, your dedication, uh, to the needs and to the lives of Oconee County citizens. So thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Anyone virtually? And with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll be more than happy to do this, I think, the fifth time. And if we pass the T S P L S, I'll get to do it six times, and that will probably be a record with nobody forever. So, and, and I would also like to tell Mr. Webb, thank you. Uh, and I've been doing this almost fourteen years, and I still lose sleep sometimes when I go home. But I do appreciate you coming forward, if you're, when, when you want to talk to us, you tell us straight up what's on your mind, so. But I will be, uh, glad to make that motion to approve the twenty twenty-two tax millage levies for Oconee County Government Maintenance and Operations. Five point nine five four in the unincorporated areas and six point eight zero four in the incorporated.
Very good.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. So our next item is, uh, consider confirmation of the twenty twenty-two tax levy for the Oconee County School Maintenance and Operations. So state law requires the Board of Commissioners to, uh, confirm this, to send it on to Department of Revenue. We have received a letter from Dr. Jason Branch indicating that the Board of Education will levy at fifteen point five mils for this, uh, year. Any questions on that item? We'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion we can, uh, confirm the twenty twenty-two tax notice levy for Oconee County Schools at fifteen point five zero.
Second.
We have a motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. So our next item is consider the intergovernmental agreements for the T S P L S referendum. And we talked a little bit about this last year, where, uh, the high end of the collection would be seventy-one million. Uh, our budget number is sixty million roughly. Of that Bishop would receive four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, Bogart one point nine million. North High Shoals would receive seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and the city of Watkinsville would receive roughly four point seven million. And that would leave a fifty-two million, uh, fifty-two and a half million left for Oconee County. We've got these divided up into four categories, uh, for expenditure. The first is related services, which would be fifteen million dollars of the budget amount. Uh, this amount is used for expenses that we're currently paying for out of general fund. And so we're going to allocate that one percent to go to cover that, which will allow one mil reduction in the, in the millage rate. Uh, we also have money set aside for paths, uh, multi-use paths, that'd be three million in the budget column. Uh, we're currently working on one that's under engineering now, which is Hog Mountain Road from, um, where the current construction will end all the way down to Lake Wellbrook Road. Um, others we've talked about in the past is, is Daniels Bridge Road connecting it back from, uh, Hog Mountain back around to Mars Hill. O V P Herman C Michael, the new L S A, L A S Park, connecting trails all the way back to each of the high schools. And then we'll, we're also working with the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission to develop a path master plan. And there'll be some community input into that, so we may even come up with some additional things to, to add to it. Safety and intersection, intersection projects will be four point five million dollars, uh, the budget amount. This is some of the ones we approved for engineering a couple, or last month, Union Church at New High Shoals Road, Collin Ferry at Assendale. Morse Ford at Lane Creek, Lane Creek at Snow's Mill. Um, also the Snow's Mill and Coal Springs, uh, and then we have a couple on the state routes that we mentioned. Uh, the R F P will be going out very shortly on the Coal Springs, Clotfelter, roundabout, State Route fifty-three. And so that money could help, help fund some of that when it comes to them. And that will leave an additional thirty million dollars that would go into road paving. And we had a presentation about three months ago on our pavement index, which is at a seventy-eight score. And so we'd be able to increase that to at least a solid B instead of a high C, so. Uh, that would be the use, all cities have signed on and agreed to participate in this, in it, and this election would occur on November the eighth. Any questions? Do we have any public comment on this item? Anyone virtually? Thank you. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for T S P L S referendum, as, as needed.
Can, can I just ask you to change that a little bit?
Yep.
Uh, make the motion to approve the resolution, which incorporates the intergovernmental agreement.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to approve the T S P L S, uh, resolution. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? We'll entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve consent items submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. We do not have need of an executive session, so Commissioner Saxon.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Uh, all in favor?